Everybody and welcome to tonight's regular board meeting, Monday, October thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-five. At this time, I'd like to call this meeting to order. We have met compliance with all official notifications. Roll call, please.
Nick Olson. Sarah Schuber McComb.
Here.
Shelley Olson. Shelley Mowen.
Here.
Laura Gavsky. Nick Schumacher here. President Steve Olson.
Here.
Excuse Catherine Demond.
All right, at this time, we would like to invite Mr. Kalen and two of your students.
Oh, pledge.
Bryant will lead us in the pledge.
You don't have to lead us, Jason. The kids do.
Can you introduce the kid, please?
Emmy Lu Gibson and Declan Berquist Bryant.
Fifth graders.
Welcome.
Welcome, guys.
You're good.
No, that's fine.
I'll start it. Right.
(speaking Spanish). (speaking Spanish). (speaking Spanish). One nation, under God, indivisible, with a good future.
Good job.
Thank you. Are there any comments by members of the public? And?
No.
No, there aren't. Disposition of minutes from September eighth, two thousand and twenty-five. Need a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion to second to accept the disposition of minutes from September eighth, two thousand and twenty-five. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Next up is the report from our superintendent.
All right, well, my first informational item is Mr. Kalen. You've got some updates and some students to give us some highlights about Bryant. Welcome.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Appreciate it. Good evening, everybody. I just want to start off by saying it's great having you all in our buildings. I had the three of you here last week and looking forward to some more visitors. I think Sarah, you're coming over this week, so love having you in and just great seeing you. The kids love it, too, so appreciate that. Just a quick update tonight. I'm going to let these two have the floor here in a little bit. I just wanted to start out by, first of all, sharing a couple of things that our fifth graders do. So Declan and Emmy Lu are both fifth graders in our building. And I wanted to bring to light some of the leadership opportunities that our kids have at Bryant before they kind of go on to that middle school. We start out the year every year, kind of our fifth graders taking a lead in a lot of things. We do morning announcements still. They come down to my office and lead us in some announcements in the morning. Our fifth grade crew kind of starts at the top with that. They have the most experience, obviously. Of course, there are leaders in our building demonstrating work, respect, belong. Our lunch setup is such that they're paired up with our kindergarten crew this year at lunch. So that's just a really good mix for them to kind of lead our youngsters. They're kindergarten helpers at the beginning of the day and at the end of the day, they're helping kindergarteners get to and from classes, out to buses, into the ASP line, the after-school program. So they're seen as leaders in the building all the time. Every morning, we have a group of kids that come through the office and other big areas of the building to help out our recycling program. They collect recyclable products and bring them to a location in our building that we can then recycle those items. And then, of course, you see them decked out in their safety patrol gear. Our fifth graders are protectors of all of our kiddos, our families outside. It's kind of led by our family engagement coordinator, Sarah Berquist, and our PTO president, Jacque Le Dean. And they kind of are in charge of making sure that the crew is ready to go every year. So they're going to take a few moments to talk about that today. And then, of course, we started our fifth graders elect, they self-elect, two student ambassadors in their classrooms. Each classroom gets their own ambassador. They do presentations in front of their teacher and their classmates, and the kids actually elect the ambassadors, and they're involved in representing the entire school. We invite them to our PBIS tier-one meetings. They have an opportunity to tell us what's going well in the school, what are some things that we need to fix. I think last year, we're still trying to fix the girl bathroom restroom door. But that was brought to our attention. Some things like that, just things that need fixing in the school, or you were involved in helping us select what activities we do for some of our fun events for our celebrations. So they have a piece, they have a part to play in our building. So, but I'm going to let me talk about one of the big things that we've been improving at the school, which is safety patrol. So go ahead, kids. So this is, this is the two of them right out here in the front crosswalk.
So what is safety patrol?
Safety, safety patrol was made up of fifth grader students who volunteered to keep the school and their classmates safe.
Pew-to-pew program. We got our friends and all these students, keeps message strong.
Our main goal to protect our students from traffic dangers and make sure school safety rules are followed.
Right. What do we have to do to be a part of safety patrol?
Fill out a paper application run by FEC and PTL, parent signature slash email. Why they want to be a member of safety.
Be in good academic standing and have strong attendance. Good reader in school.
Meet with Officer Murty.
Murty. Can't see it because the sun's on there.
To receive training about school safety and crossing guard duties.
That's Officer Murty coming and giving a presentation this year in our library to all of our safety patrol members.
Our main jobs?
Crossing guards. We tell students when it is safe to cross.
Busing car lines. We monitor students in our blue plot to make sure everyone is watching and looking out for blue vehicles.
We open car doors for younger students.
Always entrances. We also act as greeters.
Our blue plot, they're pretty busy if you've ever been to GLE or Bryant, they're in a pickup and drop-off. They're, they're very active in terms of making sure the cars and the kids are, are being safe.
Why are we important?
We are role models.
We prevent accidents.
We teach responsibility.
Community service. We enjoy doing something good for our school.
We make a good team.
And these are pictures from last year's crew. The end of the year, we try to take care of them and give them a little pizza party at the bowling alley, and we also recognize them at our school assembly every month, so. Great job, you too. Awesome. Stay up here and listen to me babble for a few minutes, or you can sit down. It's up to you. Thank you very much. This is school celebrations. We have things to celebrate. I just have two quick slides, really, to talk to you. Obviously, it's early in the year. Yes, we have some data, but it's all very fresh and new, and we're working with it. But I just wanted to share a couple of things that we're really proud of at our school. And that is that the climate and culture at Bryant are very strong, kids and adults. If you had an opportunity to walk through the building, feels good. People are happy, and kids are working really hard in their classrooms. Our fall data is very encouraging. We're at some, our data points that we are at right now are a bit ahead of where we were last year at the beginning of the year. So we're sitting good both in literacy and in math. So we feel good about where we're headed. Our structures and routines, as you saw when you came over, they're up and running. We didn't have a whole lot of changes with that in that regard last year. Last year worked out really well, so we thought we'd duplicate again, and things are great. That contributes to the bottom bullet there where we talk a little bit about behavior. We're at a record low with our incident reports right now. It's a mid-October.
Thanks.
We're just heading off things before they really become something, and we have a lot of adults in the most unstructured places that you would see most of those types of things happening, and I just think kids are responding to conversations with adults and, and doing a lot of restorative practices with other kiddos, so it's working really well. And then our SLT worked really hard in August, put together a solid plan. We kept the same goal as we had last year. We did not achieve our eighty-three percent of our students were going to be at or above proficiency on those two exams, the Ames Web Plus and also Fast Bridge, so we stuck to that again. We made significant improvements. We just want to, we want to get to that goal. And with the inclusion of the new literacy curriculum this year, we're not trying to complicate things. We're going to try and meet that goal of eighty-three percent of our kiddos. We want a hundred percent, but we strongly believe that that eighty-three percent is doable. And then you'll see that the interventions right now we have in place for our EMLSS, our sped groups, our read naturally live groups, and some of our assistant groups that work with individual kiddos during those literacy groups. And then, of course, we also in our school CIP, because math is an intentional focus district-wide, we also are trying to do a little bit of work, trying to make sure that we have solid structures built in for their RTI time, which is their intervention time for math. So we have a little bit more adult support where I could squeeze people in to make sure that those structures were in place for math as well as literacy. School challenges, you know, I sound like a broken record every time I come here, but attendance continues to be a strong focus of the front office and our teachers. They work really hard. Our, our school climate is good and culture is good, and kids want to be in the building. Just some things that we can't get away from vacations, illness, especially in the beginning of the year, illness is a big one. So we are trying to continue to celebrate attendance, making sure that kids are, you know, we, we do our monthly assemblies still at Bryant. This year, our family engagement coordinator, Sarah, thought it would be a great idea to include attendance, so we're celebrating those. We don't have any missed days during that month. Just to kind of break it down and have another data point, and we had a whole bunch of students we celebrated the first month, so we're hoping that happens again. And usually, when we're looking at attendance, it's a small group, a smaller population of kiddos, but we need them all in the classrooms to making sure that they're learning. So that's always a focus, and teachers do their part. We still have our postcards that we use to not only celebrate good attendance or welcoming a kiddo back after a week out, but we also try to give them just positive affirmations of what they're doing in the classroom. A quick little postcard home means a lot to a family, especially a young student. And then I think I obviously asked my staff to share some things, and one of the school challenges that's out there, and you might hear it from other principals, too, at the elementary, is that new literacy curriculum. The initial feedback that we get from teachers, and what I've received from teachers, is that the curriculum is great. That it's very robust, full of opportunities, but there's just a, a lot there that they have to manage and decide when to do what and how to do it for how long, and there's, there's a lot there. And so I think they're just getting used to it. I think most of my, my groups right now are in their second unit. Our K through two group, they're still in their first unit, and things are starting to feel a lot better. But giving them a little bit of extra time to talk within their PLCs or have vertical conversations with a third and a fourth grade group, like, how are you using this resource? That's been very productive, and I think well-received by the teachers. But overall, things are, we really, I love walking into a classroom and seeing the resource out in front of kids. It's tangible. I'm sure Crystal could speak volumes about it. We love them. And then here's a link to our CPR card, just kind of a, I don't know, did you want me to show that?
No, I just, what are some, what are some of the key actions maybe you guys are doing to move, and you sort of already talked about that with.
I have talked about quite a few. One thing that I change, I'll just share this, is that being that that new curriculum is, you know, it's, it's a lot, especially when you're, you're up in front of the kids for eight minutes a day teaching literacy. We're giving our teachers time during our staff meeting structure. I'm taking one day a month, and I'm making sure that I include more stuff in my weekly bulletins that I send out electronically, and less time up in front of them, just giving them to sit and get stuff. So they're, they're getting a little bit of extra time during one of those staff meetings so that they can collaborate within their own PLC or vertical teams or whomever, however they need to make sure that they have time to look at the resource. But we do it in the library. There's, there's accountability attached to it, and the teachers really appreciate that extra time. So that's one thing that we're doing that's kind of easing that burden of, how do I use this wonderful resource that our district provided, so.
Jason, your staff should be just really proud. You guys continue to grow academically. I mean, our business is teaching and learning and making sure kids are improving in reading and math, and you guys are doing a good job.
An amazing group of people that I work with every day. I love to share some report card stuff, but I can't yet, but it's good, so.
Jason, when you were talking about your, the attendance, can you describe what, what you're doing for that student that's just not showing up to school? Where, is it a team? Are you going out? Is your calls are going out? What, what's happening at Bryant?
I'm following all of them. Most of the protocols, obviously, that are built into the truancy system, we send out letters and those types of things, but I make calls. I'm calling the families or I'm asking them to come in and have a meeting with me to talk about any of the barriers that we can maybe try to overcome or what they need. A lot of times this early in the year, it's a, it's an illness where a kid's out for a week or family's taking a vacation. Those that are a little bit more difficult, I'm going to be making some house calls here next week, I think, based on some of the things that I'm dealing with, and hopefully SRO Matt Swanson will, will, will help me out with that. Not sure if I, if I can't figure out a way to get in touch with the families, I'll just go and meet them. Try to figure out the best way to make sure that their kids are in the building. But really, it's about phone calls. It's a, it's a group effort with me and the teachers. There's, like I said, they're sending out messages, CSO is something that we use on a regular basis, trying to keep up that communication. As long as families are communicating and, and having that conversation, it's just a matter of some things you can't control.
There's, there's a couple of things that come up is for, for the attendance thing. I'm wondering, kids that have like a doctor's excuse or something, is that something that'd be like not count?
If they bring a doctor's note, it doesn't count for their ten days.
Okay, that's why, that's why I like, if a kid has like a severe medical thing, you don't want them to not be able to participate in that. And then I just think, this is something that I brought up a long time ago, and I know Amy, you're familiar with this, but in the state of Minnesota, it's actually a child protection response versus a law enforcement, criminal court process for parents and just the board members. That's something that I was hoping legislatively we would look at. I know it's challenging because literally there'd be a whole state response, but there's a reason why getting resources in is actually a barrier we need to remove.
Right.
Instead of going to requiring parents that can't get their kids to school to be, expect them to show up to criminal court hearing or civil hearing processes and get fines, and you know, I mean, I would much rather see a child protection worker show up to their door versus, you know, SRO. And I'm not saying our SROs are doing a bad job. I'm saying the resources are different. And so that's something maybe even next year as a resolution thing. I just forgot about that until, you know, that came up that, you know, our SRO is going to the door, and for some families, either response is scary, but maybe a law enforcement even more, so.
But I would argue that, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, Jason. I think the principals look through that lens of how do we provide support to families and remove barriers that are causing students to not get to school. Our counselors, Harry Hennessy's our mental health family support service coordinator, they work closely together. And our social workers, you know, at the high school, middle school can provide some of those supports. So unfortunately, we don't always get that support in the community, so we sort of try to do that work internally.
And Matt, Matt is my last resort. It's, if I have exhausted all measures to contact this family.
Yeah.
And to be honest, I mean, this is one, one time in all my years of, of going through this process, but things are changing at the county a lot right now, and it's, it's just really hard to.
There's some new leadership, so. We actually have a meeting. Yeah, there, we have some, you don't know this yet, but I have a meeting with some principal reps to talk through the next steps with our communication with county resources and how we're going to support truancy, so.
Right. I mean, it's just, I've heard from parents that have had to go through truancy court, that, that's not unfortunately the most, the most helpful process to the.
And research says it's not. So that is the last resort, and only by law, really. I mean, our work is conversations and really trying to get parents like, what do you need?
Yeah.
So that's just, that's the goal is to have the conversation.
I hear you, and I believe that.
Child into the school, we can go to work.
Yes, exactly. And I just want to valet, you know, teachers, you always hear how much they want more time, so like, that's just really respectful, obviously, as a leader, for you to make that time for them, and I'm sure they obviously really, really appreciate it, like you.
My kind of teacher, you're in principle.
Yeah, helps, right?
You understand.
Yeah, thanks, Kalen.
All right. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Jason, were we going to hear from ladies here?
We're just supporting your kids.
You should have signed up.
All right, the second informational item I have tonight is our two new student reps from Superior High School. Veronica and Brendan are here to give us some updates, so I'm going to let you guys introduce yourselves and share some updates.
I'm Brendan Farrell. I am the current student body president.
I'm Veronica Acuero. I am the vice president of student council.
And we're here tonight to give you some recent and then upcoming events that are, and then are going to be happening at school. So the recent events that we've had is, a couple of weeks ago, we just finished up our week of homecoming that included some fun dress-up days that student council put on, as well as the homecoming parade and assembly. We had fall ball last Saturday that student council helps to put on. And then we had some celebration in sports. Senior Lainey Almonte is the cross-country champ for the Lake Superior Conference.
We had a boy, Isaiah Jordan, who placed fourteenth, I believe.
Fourteenth.
So that's another good thing, another one of our teammates.
Making second team all-conference. Boys soccer won their conference championship and is hosting a home playoff game this year. That's pretty exciting. And then junior Lily Clark advanced to state for girls tennis.
My, I add, homecoming went very well. We heard lots of feedback from students. That has been the best assembly that we've had in a very long time. So that was very exciting. The parade, there was a lot of participation. We got a lot more elementary schools to come in, so that was very exciting. The football game went good, participation with just like student section. Anything else? There were good homecoming like games going on and like home events that we tried to push with the, what is it called? That one group that with like Kate Porter and Aiden. Did you make it?
Oh.
The sportsmanship. We have been partnering with them, pushing out, I'm also a part of the, like, student section account for the high school, so like pushing out like themes and like participation, so we've been just ensuring that these people are able to go and support their fellow Spartans at their home events, as well as clubs and things like that.
And I think we've really seen a big spike in participation compared to, I think, the last three years. I think the last home football game last Friday night was the most student section engagement I've ever seen at the high school. So moving on to some upcoming student council events, freshman elections are underway for student council, and the ballot is out right now. That ballot will be closed later this week, and we will be selecting freshmen to join us this Friday. And we are currently planning for our winter spirit week, which we're calling Frost Fest. And so we're planning an assembly as well as dress-up days to get everyone in the holiday spirit and hopefully see again some more student participation.
We want to try and incorporate lots of like after-school events as well, like we did for homecoming. We did a powder buff and powder puff team, so those were pretty like well-participated with, so we want to do something like that. I don't know, like badminton or dodgeball or something like that, just for people involved. So again, with the dress-up days as well, and we also want to incorporate more school assemblies because we had such a good participation for our homecoming one.
Yeah, and I think one of the things that made our assembly so strong is that we hosted the championship powder buff, which is boys volleyball game. And I think having like a big event that people are already kind of invested in to kind of draw those kids in and get them to be engaged is something we did really well this year.
Did Mr. Conley participate? Did Mr. Conley participate that day?
Oh, yeah.
Some first place.
And to add on to that, the teachers, I think, had a good homecoming as well. I feel like they participated as well. Like, we like to incorporate our staff and our teachers as well, so that the entire student body and everybody are part of it, are having fun.
Then the last thing that we have for you guys, if you're working on an upcoming student voice project, you want to do more to involve the student body this year, especially with creating some positive change in the school, looking at some problems that the student body has seen in the school, and then trying to bring some change from that. We want to hear their ideas on how to move forward and make SHS a better place. And then I just want to ask the board if there's anything that you guys would want to report on going forward every month, anything specific that comes to mind?
Probably not at this point, but you know, you can always, we can work with Mrs. Tesh, you know, to get in contact with you guys. Can I ask you a question? Brendan, you first, and then Veronica. What other things are you involved in at, at the high school? I mean, you're on the student council, but are you involved in sport or in academic team or?
Yeah, I'm, I am involved in cross-country. I'm a cross-country captain, and I'm also on the track and field team.
Yeah, I'm also involved in cross-country. I am also a part of the gymnastics team. I am a manager. I used to formerly do gymnastics as well. I'm on the track team, and I am a captain for that. I've been for two years. I'm also in National Honor Society.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Very nice and welcome. We really appreciate you being here. Move on to the action items. WIA Winter Sports Co-op Agreements Administration recommends approval of the following athletic cooperatives: gymnastics, girls hockey, boys swim and dive.
Motion to approve.
Thank you.
Second, motion in a second to approve the recommendation for cooperative teams of gymnastics, girls hockey, boys swim and dive. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Consideration of overnight field trip requested from Pete Conley, Superior High School for Chicago, Illinois, from February twenty-five, March, to March one, two thousand and twenty-six, for an AP Biology Evolution Field Trip.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion in a second. Is there further discussion?
I think my only carryover question from last week was, how many students are we required to have for chaperones? So it just says fifty to sixty-five. And I know Mr. Conley is attending, and I see three other staff members on here. I just want to make sure that we're having a good ratio, because that's a lot of students for four adults.
Yeah, right now, our numbers are down this year, so when I propose this, I'm just going up last year's numbers. Right now, we're currently at, I think, forty-two students who are looking at going into this. As far as chaperones, yes, it would be myself, Mr. Smart, and Miss Francisco, but we also have other faculty members who have asked to go with because they, they know it is actually a pretty fun trip. So if we do need additional chaperones, we can do that. As far as the numbers, this is my thirteenth year of doing this trip. It started out with eight kids, and now it's up to fifty, fifty-twos, things like that. So I would say based off of what I've done in the past, yes, I think the four of us can do it, but if that is not what the board recommends, say, more chaperones, I would by all means be willing to look at that, yeah.
Is there a policy in place? No, I, I mean, I lean on the expertise of our teaching staff who do this, recognizing the group of kids that they're bringing, a ratio of one to fifteen. I mean, I, that's what I had in Washington DC when I went, and I think I had twelve or thirteen kiddos that I was kind of in charge of. So I mean, I feel, like, if you feel good with that, I, I feel good with that. And if, like you said, if you do get to those numbers of fifty or sixty-five, then you may need to add another staff or two to come. Yeah. Yeah.
So we try and keep it right around that forty-eight. Forty-eight to fifty-two, because then our chaperones fit on the bus as well, so we take a fifty-six or no, fifty-two bus is what it is. Our kids typically are right around that forty-eight mark. What I do prior to our trip is I meet with all of our chaperones and say, what is your connection to these students? So my kids, I take most of them. I usually have twenty-five to thirty kids, so my numbers are a little bit higher. So I try and find out, does Mr. Ross, Mr. Smart, and Miss Francisco, do they have a connection with these kids? And so we create a roster that these kids are, these chaperones are responsible for. And so that's, I want to make sure that they have that connection with our chaperones, rather than going down there and not knowing somebody and it.
And it, to me, it feels too much, uh, so it's it's a lot easier once I find that connection with our with our chaperones.
I don't think that my concern is necessarily towards this specific uh, class or field trip. I think that I'm just maybe putting some kind of policy in place in future would be a good idea for overnight field trips especially. I mean, things are just changing overall in the world with behaviors and students and things that they do overnight in hotel rooms with other children. And I just think it would be a good idea to have something in, I don't know, some kind of guideline.
As far as our room to say, I I want to make, put myself in each of you, our girls are on one floor, uh, the boys are on different floors, so the hotel works with us very well with that. So we have complete separation of uh, where our students are at, we have our chaperones on the floors with the, with those kids as well. So that's just some of the the things that we put in place to.
I guess I wouldn't recommend necessarily a policy, but maybe as part of this form, the form can rec, provide some recommendations for appropriate ratios. Does that make sense, like, I don't, I don't know if the whole formal policy, but so you can kind of speak to as you fill this out in the future, like how many staff to students you're
Okay.
you're considering or something.
I think that academic field trips kind of differ from sports field trips as well, so you know, there's
Yeah.
you know your students and how they behave, so it's it's different, but.
There may be a group that needs a smaller ratio.
Right.
And the teachers would know that, yeah.
And there's different conduct and like consequences, right, for like sports versus non-sport trips, and yeah, there's just a lot to that, so. I think it's a great way to incentivize AP Bio, let's, thank you for doing this for thirteen years.
Yeah, my kids, uh, it's one of their recommendations, at the end of the year, I have my AP students write a letter to my incoming classes. What do you recommend, how you, how are you going to be successful and it's, they'll write some of these things, but then one of the things that always come up is don't forget to go to Chicago, it's an amazing opportunity. So it's something that I like to provide because uh, these kids, the the museum that they go to.
Right.
My, my exhibit is at the Field Museum, but some of them go to the Museum of Science and Industry and they have this uh, anatomy, they have uh, a CSI, online CSI thing where they're swiping layers off of cadaver, the virtual cadavers and things like that. And so they remember that type of stuff and yeah, that's things that I don't even think of. So now I've incorporated Latinx into the Museum of Science and Industry. Uh, the Shet Aquarium, I have them doing an assignment, the uh, Field Museum, so just adding up a little bit more accountability for for going down there.
Could be um, potential future agenda item, just like have, I mean, stu, a student chair back?
We would love to have the students back to talk about their experience, when do you guys, when does this trip happen?
March first.
February and March twenty fifth.
So could we maybe have them come back in April? Could, and can you remember to invite? If they wouldn't mind giving us an uh, an update, how when?
Sounds awesome.
Yeah, let, give a presentation, it could be at the committee of the whole or it could be at the regular board meeting.
Yeah.
Okay. We, I don't think we've had them come and talks, that'd be great.
No.
Yeah.
Absolutely.
It says you're doing some fundraising too, for the.
No, if they're not going to do fundraising, then this is all out of their pocket. We thought about it and it wasn't uh, equitable how we were doing it, so I just said, no, you're, you are now on your own. Because we had kids who were trying to do work and others that weren't, and they were being thrown into that pool, and I just said, that's not fair.
Any further comments or concerns?
Do. Do, this is probably a no, Amy, but like, you know, what about our kids that are like McKinney? Um, act, you know, eligible, I mean, like how is that, is there accessibility for kids that don't have?
We have the Angel Fund, that could be an option, there could be some other school funds, if you have students, yeah, if you have students who can't afford to pay. You can, you know those, okay, yeah, so there's, they they do tap in, okay, thanks, sorry, no more, nothing else.
One last thing I want to thank Steve for bringing up the water bottle. A little bit validated, yeah.
Long time since we did that. We used to win regularly.
Yeah.
All right, any, any further discussion, no, I'm not competitive at all.
None of us are at this table, no.
Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries, thank you. We'll go to the board committee reports, first was the Teaching and Learning Committee. Action item, administration recommends the addition of new courses at Superior High School. These courses include Algebra II, Mathematical Modeling, Data Science and AP Pre-Calculus.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion in a second. Is there any further discussion?
I think they did a great presentation on these classes and uh, thank, thank you to everyone who was involved in the presentation, it was fantastic.
And all the work put into it, it sounds like it was a ton of work, so, thank you.
Yeah, thanks, Crystal, and especially that group.
Does an amazing job and all the backwork that happens before we roll anything out, so, thank you, Crystal.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Informational items, Dina Hagen, our Director of Student Services, provided us with information about progress monitoring, the effect, the effect on our special education students and especially on their IEPs. Very important because the IEPs need to reflect at all time the goals and what progress monitoring is in place to assure that the students are meeting those goals.
Motion to accept the Teaching and Learning Committee reports.
Second.
Motion in a second to accept the Teaching and Learning Committee report, is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries. Budget Insurance Committee, action items, gifts, grants and bequests, administration recommends approval to accept gifts, grants and bequests received in September twenty twenty-five.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion in a second to accept the gifts, grants and bequests, September twenty twenty-five, and again, it's a very, very impressive start to our school year, and thank you very much to all of our donors. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries. Discussion items, third Friday enrollment. Take one more peek at that. I thought it was interesting when the three of us were at Northern Lights where there was that happening to my truck, um.
Get over it, Steve.
That informed us that they were taking in new students, you know, that even though our enrollment is here, that some of the schools, the same was true at Great Lakes. Uh, so at least we're seeing some new students in and of course that helps eventually our bottom line.
And I just had Cooper say they're getting a student from Duluth today, I mean, so we're constantly, you know, enrolling new kids.
Well, and that was an issue in the past, Great Lakes was at capacity and we had people that wanted to get in there and wasn't an option. Also, David, your presentation was very depressing again, so thanks for that. Always show up, very consistent, very consistent.
That was intentional.
He did have a smile on his face.
He's smiling, hear bad news, it feels better.
All right, another uh, discussion item, Actual Transfer Service, equalization aid, equalized property valuation levy information will be updated on October fifteenth and we all can't wait to see that.
On this side.
Yeah, all right. Preliminary budget will be published fifteen days prior to the budget hearing, October twenty seventh, twenty twenty-five. David provided us with some information already and especially the the Cliff Notes. Because we'll, we'll get some questions and everything, but uh, that information is going to be very valuable if if we're approached. Informational items, the budget hearing is scheduled for Monday, October twenty seventh, twenty twenty-five at five PM, that will also be our committee of the whole meeting for November. We reviewed the fontan revenue and expenditure preliminary reports.
Motion to accept the Budget and Insurance Committee report.
Second.
Motion in a second to accept the Budget Insurance Committee report, is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries. Personnel Negotiations Committee, action items, administration recommends approval that October twenty twenty-five new hires and separations report.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion in a second to accept the new hires and separation report from October twenty twenty-five, is there any further discussion? Just a, a, a note I have to say, Lori Larson, uh, I did have the privilege of working many years with her in this school district and she, she's going to be a great loss and people are hard to re- replace, she's going to be one of them. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Administration recommends accepting the resignation and releasing Zachary Roth, high school health teacher for, from his twenty-five, twenty-six school year contract per his request effective October third, two thousand twenty-five with the liquidated damages provision enforced.
Motion to approve. Second.
Motion in a second. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. We do have a new agenda item this evening, administration recommends approval of the updated secretary and billing specialist job description in the support staff category.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion in a second. For the updated secretary and billing specialist job description, is there any further discussion?
Is that because it's a new position that we're approving?
Yes, you guys have to approve all new job descriptions or updated ones, I should say, so. It's taking the secretary, combining it with the billing specialist job that we fitted about five years ago.
That wasn't filled.
Which we did not.
That which we never filled. Because this would be taking a bigger role in the medical piece. We need to get reinforcements or.
This is some of the low Amy proof, yeah, where there's a.
Give revenue, it's not a.
Yeah, get revenue. Right, so it'll be on the billing specialist pay scale, which is already on the support staff salary schedules, we don't need to change anything.
Any other concerns, questions? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Motion to accept the Personnel and Negotiations Committee report.
Second.
Motion in a second to accept the Personnel Negotiations Committee report. Any further discussion, hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carry. Sorry, had to log back in here for a second. Next was our Policies and Rules Committee. Administration approves this proposed approval of changes to the following policies based on EOLA recommendations in order to be in compliance with federal law updates. First one is the Second Reading of Revised Policy forty-one twenty-four, Notice of Reasonable Assurance of Employment. The slang which in this policy have been modified to be more consistent with state statute.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion in a second to approve Revised Policy four one two four, is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Second Reading of Revised Policy fifty-one twelve, Use of Tobacco and Nicotine by Students. The policy revision is far for a more descriptive policy position to promote respect for Native American ceremonial tobacco usage.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion in a second to approve Policy fifty-five twelve, is there any further discussion? So i- in conjunction with that, with this being Indigenous Day in in the state of Wisconsin, our school district has a land acknowledgement agreement, the school district of Superior commits to recognizing, including and respecting our sovereign tribal partners and all indigenous students, families and staff in our community. We acknowledge that the school district of Superior is located on the traditional ancestral and contemporary lands of both the Anishinaabe people and the Dakota people. We have a moral responsibility as educators to critically reflect on the histories of dispossession, forced removal and cultural erasure that are part of this institution. Is there any further discussion?
There was also a field trip today, twenty-five students went to the Duluth uh, city hall and there were some speakers and some dancers and some drum groups and it sounds like it was a great event.
Wonderful.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Second Reading of Revised Policy eighty-three ninety-five, Student Mental and Physical Health Services. This policy is revised to reflect the provision of both mental and physical health services in school, both through school resources. The policy is also updated to better reflect the option for arrangements for onsite health services provided by outside agencies either in person or virtually as supplementary to services provided by school staff.
Motion to approve. Second.
Motion in a second to we, to approve the Second Reading of Revised Policy eighty-three ninety-five, is there any further discussion?
Yes, did we receive, were there mental health grants again at all that came out that we received?
Well, we get some all the time, we just got one today for an opioid grant.
Is Jane still doing that?
Yeah, yeah.
Not surprising, all right, thank you. No more discussion for me.
There any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Motion to accept the Policies and Rules Committee report.
Motion in a second to accept the Policies and Rules Committee report, is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Next is other reports by any members of our board.
We have some exciting news from the youth football program, the seventh and eighth graders are both going to the championship game on Saturday. I believe the seventh grade plays at four and the eighth grade who are undefeated play at six-thirty at Denfeldt. So it's pretty exciting.
Pretty cool, you can watch those games on YouTube and seventh grade one especially, the other night was small.
There was a ton of people in attendance at seventh grade, it was, it was great to see everybody out.
Coach Otto Birdie won his hundredth game and had a celebration of him as well after the game on Saturday. So we appreciate our coaches and that was a big accomplishment.
And the the classroom visits, which was mentioned very early on in the meeting tonight, the schools that we went to went so well. The information that was provided to us and being able to get into the classrooms to see what was going on. Northern Lights, there wasn't a, there wasn't anybody that was not working on math that day, it was really, really, really cool. And at the, at the various levels, you know, the grade levels and everything, everybody was in tune and it, it was really fun to watch. And the way that the, some of the teachers get the kids involved in the class, you know, it was just very nice to see.
It was nice to hear from, Ms. Bender kind of gave us a tour, she was.
Oh, was she, uh?
Yeah, she was doing training, I guess. It was, I mean, it's always good to hear from somebody else, but she did a really good job, she was really well prepared and you know, it was fun, and then we got to mess with Steve's truck a little bit. And at the high school, you know, Kate, I mean, she's only been there two weeks, whatever, but she's doing an amazing job. She's got a plan and she's working it, so it's fun, fun watching her.
Staff appreciate her.
Yeah, with Ms. Bender, it's, it's really nice because there's our aspiring administrators group, you know, hopefully get that up and running again, but that's the purpose right there.
Yeah.
Very, very.
We have a lot of folks stepping up into different leadership roles, it's been very wonderful, yeah.
I think the principals really appreciate.
Yes.
Add us back up when they're not.
Yes. Yeah, and and you know, we've talked a lot about how we make decisions as leaders and just building that leadership capacity so they kind of understand the challenges we face and are able to help on, you know, help build that capacity with their staff, it's been good.
I do have a question for our student reps, you know, you had asked us like what uh, we would like from you, but I also just want to open that door that, you know, maybe at a student council meeting or something like we would like to hear from the students of what you need from us.
Yeah, absolutely.
So if people have questions or there's resources or as Kalen said, a broken girl's bathroom door and it's not being fixed, I guess, through the other routes, like, let us know uh, what students need, that's really important.
I think they get a little intimidated when, you know, like, you're up, people come and visit and ask questions, so.
Yeah.
And Mr. Rosicky is coming into the classroom, I think people get a little shy and they don't want to raise their voices and say anything that could potentially be an issue. So I think that if we just talk about it as just a group of students, we can write some things down and bring it back to you.
Great, thank you both. Great, thank you both.
Hmm.
And even just working with Mrs. Tesh, I know that was on my, like, to-do list as a student representative was to find some of the things that students are seeing as problems in the school. Um, just small things like that example of the broken bathroom door. I know that we've had bathrooms near our tech ed wing that have been closed for an extended period of time.
Hmm.
Um, that have been off limits to students and staff.
Hmm.
And some, uh, some representatives from Spartan Manufacturing have brought it to my attention that the closest bathrooms are pretty far away.
Yeah.
And it would be nice to be able to have access to those again.
Yeah, and might I add, we're a little late to it, but normally every year after homecoming, after like the start of the school year goes, we send out a Google form to the students and we kind of say, hey, what went well? Just coming in just in general with the start of the school year and what things can we improve on, what things can we like bring to other people. And so we'll definitely make sure to do that in the next upcoming weeks to hear feedback from them.
Awesome. I appreciate that. And thanks for being so prepared, like.
Yeah, it was fun.
Well done.
Really good job.
Yes, thank you.
Okay, there's also, uh, music. Uh, the music department at the high school has some upcoming concerts.
Oh.
And a lot of the elementary schools have trunk retreats happening this, this month. So super fun. And the, the bus is going to be at some of them. So it'll be fun.
Uh, real quick, going back to the, the board meetings that we did, is that something that do you just pick out three days or you can pick out, you know, certain days and?
We work with the principals to figure out what makes sense.
They're saying.
These are the best days to come in.
Best days to come in.
Yeah, because they might have like, I don't know, I'm trying to think of some, they might have an admin meeting that they're not going to be there, or they might have some staff meetings going on or, or I'm trying to think.
The prayer department there in the house.
Yeah. Yeah, 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 those kinds of things, especially stuff like that going on. So.
Okay.
We do feel very spread out this year. Like a three week span.
Oh.
We're spread out.
Is, is that?
Which is fine.
Okay, I was like, it's totally fine.
My question was more wrong because when we went to Brian.
Oh.
It was Wednesday and Jason had mentioned his PE teacher, this is normally somebody that's out during
During recess.
During recess and stuff and, and he, he wasn't available on Wednesdays. So Jason was supposed to be out there typically and so, and that's what I thought. I just wanted to make sure that like we weren't like
No.
This is what, yeah.
I don't want to misspeak, but I, my understanding is they, yeah, they fill in the time that works for them. Yeah, so.
And I could have just said a one-off, but I was just curious. Okay, cool.
All right.
I have a couple of things. Yeah. Um, first of all, uh, Laura and Steve, you guys are being recognized tomorrow night for, is it years of service on the board?
Yes.
So, right? And you're both, okay, so that's, yeah. So that's very cool. So I wanted, you guys didn't mention that, so I wanted to recognize that and that's exciting. Um, on that same note, this last week was School Board Appreciation Week. So I wanted just to publicly make sure that that we all recognize the hard work that you guys do. We appreciate, we have a very great, we have a great board. So I enjoy working with all of you. It's been a good start to the year. So thank you for all you do. Um, couple last things. One is, as you remember back in August, we talked about the Cartwheel, uh, Mental Health Access that we created for students. It is becoming a, a well-received. We're getting parents sending emails to, to us saying, this is amazing. The turnaround has been super fast. From the time a referral was made to the time a child can get teletherapy for mental health. So from a student council perspective, if there are students in need of accessing mental health, um, Cartwheel is a program that they can access. Um, and it's a virtual therapy that has been well-received by students and they just need to reach out to their school counselor. So we're going to get some, um, signage up at the high school to make sure students are seeing that, but we've been communicating that through email and social media and it's been well-received. So just wanted to give you an update on that from August. Um, and then we've got like professional development days at the end of the month and we got parent teacher conferences coming up this month. So October is always a very busy time, but it's a fun time too. So.
I did ask Terry Bronson about that at Great Lakes when we did tours too. She said they have five or six kids, I think, right, Steve? That were involved in that program and nothing but good things to say about it.
Yeah. And it's good quality.
Hmm.
Any other board member or district administrator highlights? Consideration of Bills and Pre-approved Bills.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion second to pay our bills and pre-approved bills. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. And a final reminder, the budget hearing, November Committee of the Whole will be on Monday, October twenty-seventh, five PM.
Like to make a motion to adjourn.
There. You'd like to make a motion to adjourn?
Second.
There's a motion in a second to adjourn this meeting. Any discussion, hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion carries. Thank you very much.
Thanks, students. Appreciate you guys.